Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're now going to move on into public comment. This gives us an opportunity for the public to go ahead and address city council. If you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees are not allowed. You will have a time limit, five minutes to comment. The total public comment period shall be thirty minutes for non-agenda items and thirty minutes per agenda items. Disruptive or disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. Did we have anybody sign up tonight? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address city council regarding public comment? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and close public comment.
So.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We do not have any public hearings scheduled tonight, so we're going to jump into the meat of our agenda. First thing on the docket is eight alpha, which is the snow removal policy.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, tonight is the first night that you'll get to meet our public services director, Rich Kachara. He's going to discuss the snow removal policy. So as you can see, that we have a couple policies on the agenda that he has brought from his previous experience. A lot of these, or both of these actually, are part of LMC guiding documents to help us establish policies. They may or may not be applicable immediately. The water meter one, for example, we don't get a lot of requests for water meter testing, things like that, but it's good to have policies in place in case that happens and we're not scrambling to try to figure out how to do things. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rich.
First off, Richard, on behalf of all of us at city council, welcome to the City of the Sewer.
Thank you, Mayor. There it is. Yes, so the first item we have here is the snow removal policy. This policy is straight off a boilerplate template that is on the League of Minnesota Cities website. The criteria, as you see in the PowerPoint there, is a two-inch snowfall or more, drifting ice, and the time of the snowfall in relationship with the use of the streets. This, this policy is used for a guidance for staff to operate and control as best we can in snowfall events. So from what I've heard, snow emergencies have not been declared in the past. Snow emergencies are not the favorite tool of public service departments. They do not like to use them, especially when people are not used to them. Getting people educated about what to do in the case of an emergency will be a tool that we will be tasked with, especially this coming winter. And it's a tool we want to use so that way we can be more efficient and get done in a more timely manner. So the announcement will be made on city website, Facebook, newspaper, K-Check Radio.
Can I make a recommendation in regards to the announcements that we also put it into our utility bills as well? There's a flyer that goes along with each month's utility bills. That give them plenty of advanced warning.
Yeah, we can, if I may add, we can definitely, if this policy is adopted, we'll make sure that we plaster it everywhere so that people know that it's potentially coming and to keep an eye out on the website, on Facebook, on Twitter for potential snow emergencies. But anytime there's a snow event, you know, keep an eye on it. It should be in the back of people's minds. So.
Will it be text as well?
It can be text if they sign up for the notify me section of the website. So if you, if you sign up for that and you opt in to receive texts, then you can receive texts.
Well, we have a policy that you're asking us to approve, and at the bottom of the first page is where that is listed. We should be adding that before we vote on this.
We, we could clarify it. The website is, is what, in my, my mind is, covers that, but we could definitely put notify me on there as well.
The, the other thing I would add, I'm ahead of the game by at least a meeting, and that is if we approve a franchise agreement, at some point we will have public television where it could also be posted. So we can put that in here, it won't hurt, it doesn't exist.
We could add, light name of E would be the notify me, light name of F would be any city communications.
Yeah, make it generic even better.
Let's make it E for utility bills, F for the text if notify me, and G for CATV. Okay? Go ahead, Richard.
Any questions regarding this policy?
Hi, go ahead. Have we had, have we had problems in the past that necessitate this? And can you give examples of that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer this because I have some experience in it from last winter. There were, as you remember, we had some freezing and thawing events last winter where we had a big thaw, and then we had a big snow, snow event. And when we go around these cars, when we don't declare a snow emergency, that creates a pile of snow, and that pile of snow melts and creates a big ice chunk in that area. So the street never really gets cleared unless you have all the cars off the street. So we have received numerous complaints last year about this particular issue. And that's, that's what's driven this conversation. I think earlier this year in, in April when this was occurring, I had mentioned that we'll bring forward a, a snow removal policy before the snow season starts. So it, it has been an issue. I think the expectation is that we remove snow curb to curb in a timely manner. And in order to do so, we, we really need to declare a snow emergency. Now, there's, like Rich had alluded, there's education components that we're not going to immediately declare a snow emergency for the first time ever in twenty years and then start ticketing and towing people. We're going to help educate them, give them some information if they, if their car is parked there, you know, maybe not give them a ticket, but try to get them aware of the different ways that we can communicate with them. So that, we, we don't want to ticket and tow people, we want them just to move their cars. It's not, it's not a revenue generator or anything like that. It's, it's just to make sure that our streets are clear and safe.
Is there going to be any type of coordination with waste man, management during this? Because last year, there was at least four times, four snowstorms that we had that, in fact, in April, that, that pickup deliveries for waste were sitting on top of the snowbanks, and then the things were falling over into the, into the road, they're being shoved all along. It was a kind of a disaster.
Yeah, we definitely can, you know, coordinate these snow emergencies with them. If we have a snow emergency, the idea would be that we wouldn't pick up refuse at that time because we want the, the street to be clear. People put out their, their cans, they might tip over and things like that. So we'll communicate with them. I think having a clear street will help alleviate some of those problems too, because you could put your can out in a, in the street that doesn't have any snow on it, where your can's not going to tip over. So I think it'll help that issue, but we'll make sure we communicate as well.
I do have a question. Maybe it's not here, we need it, but if I'm a visitor to this town, how will I know? Do we, do we, and I'm not particularly in favor of having signs all over, but do you have signage up in certain places, at key entrance places or something, that, that alert people that might come to town and, and might become visiting me and they park in front of my house and, not me personally, but a person in town? I don't know, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, you know, we don't want to invest a lot in putting signs up everywhere because it, it will likely happen. And because we control the towing and ticketing, we have the discretion to say, oh yeah, you're in town, you didn't know about it. We can, we can handle it in that manner. We can put it at the main entrances of town, you know, that, you know, be aware there's no emergency procedures and put our website on there so people can look it up. But for the most part, I think if, if you're in town, you probably are visiting somebody that's a resident that we hope knows about it, that can communicate it.
I would just be concerned, we want to be, we want to be a friendly city and yet have an ordinance, so if we can at least have a minimal amount of notification to people just in case.
Just to piggyback on that, is, is there an appeals process in case there's a situation that a person, a citizen feels was unavoidable? Can they appeal to somebody?
They definitely can. That would just be through the police department who would issue the ticket. The idea is that, that we would issue the ticket if they're, they're parked on the street during the snow emergency, and then we would tow you to an area that the city owns, city-owned property. So you wouldn't be sitting in, let's say, LaBelle's parking lot. You'd, it'd all be controlled by the city, so it'd be at the discretion of the city. We'd pay, we'd have to pay the tow truck company, but the tow truck company wouldn't get any proceeds from holding, holding the vehicles. So there would be a process, it'd be the same as with any other ticket.
Okay, thank you. My question has to do with mailboxes. I know that it seems like every year we have a problem where we have to go ahead and pay somebody for a mailbox that comes down during one of our snow removals. Is there a policy regarding permanent mailboxes? I know that we have some within the city where they've, in essence, built like brick shrines around your mailbox. A mailbox is supposed to be breakaway so that if they were to get hit by a plow, they could be easily replaced for the sixty-five dollars. If somebody has a fortress around their mailbox, who's going to pay the, above the sixty-five dollar charge?
Yeah, so our, so we do have a snow or a mailbox policy that's been adopted. It's been included in this policy. And you can put up the most extravagant mailbox that you want, but the most that you'll get out of the city is sixty-five dollars to replace it. So if you have brick and mortar around it, that's fine. If it gets hit and damaged and it, and it's actually our fault, then we'll, the max we'll pay is sixty-five. Keep in mind that mailboxes that are basically, don't work, that the post is deteriorated, that it's just going to fall over no matter what, we won't pay for those. So it's got to be ones that are properly installed, that's why the diagram's in there. And if they're properly installed and they get hit by a plow, then they get replaced or they get the, the sixty-five dollar check. If you can tell that the wood has been rotted and, and it's been put up improperly or not to the correct manner, then they don't receive the sixty-five dollar check.
So if the plow comes by and doesn't hit, the plow doesn't hit it, but the snow, the force of the snow being funnel up into the yard hits it, knocks it over, that doesn't count?
It does not count, no. So the flipping of the snow does not count. The way that the, the diagram is, the flipping of the snow shouldn't knock over a mailbox if it's properly installed.
Well, last winter it, it didn't, it didn't knock mine over, but we had some snow and it was up to the top of mailboxes, so when they came by, it went over the, right at the level or over the top of it. So it is, it is possible.
I do know that the post office requires each resident to go ahead and maintain that area where the mailbox is and to shovel around that, otherwise they just will not deliver to a household. So I think that each of our residents is going to have to take some interest in making sure that we can try to alleviate any potential problems when it comes to mailboxes and snow removal in general. Any other questions regarding the snow removal policy?
There's priority places that can hit first, I would assume, as part of this? Fire department, so on.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the new Streets and Parks Manager, T.J. Henry C., has been already tasked with creating a prior, priority list of the city of all the routes. So it'll be basically a one, two, three priority system, and that way the public will know where our priorities, one, two, and three, fall.
Thank you. Any other additional questions? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the snow removal policy as presented in the attachment.
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Do, if I may, discussion?
I was just going to say that.
We had some modifications that were possible.
Right, I was just going to say that with the modifications, including E for utility bills, F for text if notify me, G CATV, those are the three that I caught. Was there anything that I'm missing?
And could you add just a, an other, other possible city vehicle or?
Other such as signage?
Just kind of an open-ended, if you want to add to this, you don't have to specify us.
Others as available.
Yeah.
Other means of communication is what you said.
Okay.
We have a motion, Mr. Mayor, you either have to have it withdrawn or we have to modify it.
Let's go ahead and, I believe it was you Ben who made the motion, would you go ahead and take away the motion? We'll go ahead and start over on this, modify it this time?
Yep.
I'll take it away.
So, go ahead and entertain a motion for the city council to approve the snow removal policy as modified with the addition of the utility bills, text if notify me, CATV, and others such as signage, for example, as presented in the attachment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We'll now move on to eight Bravo, which is our water meter policy.
So Mayor Hague, members of the city council, again, we have the, the public services director to discuss this policy. It doesn't come up very frequently that we get this request, but, you know, with the conversations about utility bills, we want to make sure that there's policies in place. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our water meter policy has been developed by many cities. It's another tool to allow customers to request a verification of the meters. A lot of, a lot of customers, when they get a new meter, they can't believe it's accurate because as meters age, they slow down. All, all previous meters, I would say to ten years ago, had moving parts in them. Those moving parts do build up with materials and they do slow down. And then when they get, when a customer gets a new meter, of course, the usage will go up, so their bill goes up. This gives that customer a tool if they want to go down to verify it. The three hundred dollar deposit required, that comes from verification and staff and administrative time to remove, replace, send the meter in, get it verified, bring it back, and then if it gets reinstalled, how that happens. If it's deemed inaccurate outside the AWWA standards, the three hundred dollars will be credited to the account of the person, the customer. If there, if it's deemed accurate, the three hundred dollars is kept to pay for the accuracy testing and staff time. And like administrator said, the requests aren't frequent, but actually I did have a question if it was an option my first week here, so.
Councilmember Johnson, you have a question?
Well, yeah, can you back up one slide there, the second part there? If the meter is deemed accurate, let's see, if the meter is deemed inaccurate, three hundred dollars will be credited to the account and a new meter will be installed.
I think those are flipped.
Flip-flop, yeah, exactly.
I think the PowerPoint is flipped.
Should be if the meter is deemed accurate, three hundred dollars will be credited.
Yeah, I think that, the PowerPoint is flipped, the policy has it incorrectly.
I, I, I'm not sure that aligns with the policies, what I'm getting at. Let's, let's clarify this. If it's, if the meter is deemed inaccurate, wouldn't you credit, you, and the, and the, and the customer is correct, it's inaccurate, wouldn't they get their three hundred bucks back?
Correct, and I apologize, I have, I have inaccurate, inaccurately put up there. So, so if, the first, the third bullet point should read, if meter is deemed accurate?
Correct.
Then a three hundred dollar, well, actually, no, I think it is correct, because.
But that, but it doesn't say that in, in the policy that I can see.
No, I, I think it is correct in there. So if the meter's accurate, then the, the request would be essentially denied, and then that three hundred dollars would go towards the, the staff time and the testing. If it is inaccurate, then the meter will be replaced and the three hundred dollars that was deposited will be credited to the account.
So it's correct up there, but I don't see that in here. I don't see that, that was one of my questions I had for you. If, if it's inaccurate, don't they get their three hundred dollars back? I didn't see that in the actual policy. I see it up on the screen.
Yeah, you're right, it, it addresses when a, that a bill will be adjusted accordingly, but it does not address the three hundred dollar deposit.
Well, there's two inaccuracies, let's be clear.
Right.
One's a ninety-eight percent threshold, whatever, more or less, I can't remember. And one's a hundred and two, and they're different in the policy.
Correct, Mayor and Council. If it is reading under ninety-eight percent, they are not being charged for less, and it falls outside the standard, but they are not being billed for what they are using. So that's where the three hundred dollar refund would not apply. If they are, if it is accounting for more than one hundred and two percent of the water going through the meter, that is where the three hundred dollar refund goes to their account. If it's under the ninety-eight percent, it is undercharging them, so they would not receive that discount. We would replace the meter because it is not up to AWWA standards, but they would not get the three hundred dollar refund because it's not tracking the full quantity.
Right, that makes sense, but I'm not sure the, this, like, like Marvin said, this says will be adjusted accordingly, it doesn't say three hundred dollars.
It doesn't have the deposit refund in there clearly.
Right.
For the one, greater than one oh two. The last sentence?
Yep.
So if I may, what, essentially if the meter comes back and it's overcharging the customer, staff will work and adjust that back, give a credit back accordingly. That's what, that's what it says in the policy on the PowerPoint, it's, it's incorrect. So basically, if, if it's between ninety-eight and a hundred and two, the old meter gets put back in. If it's under ninety-eight, the city keeps the, the three hundred dollar deposit because they've been undercharged and the meter gets replaced with a new one. If it's over a hundred and two percent, then the city will try to figure out what percentage it's over and credit that account back accordingly.
Plus the three hundred?
Yes, and that's.
Plus the three hundred, yeah.
Yes.
There should be a sentence, at the end of the sentence, and it, it should say, and the three hundred dollar deposit will be returned to the customer. That's what's missing.
Correct.
I've got a couple of questions in regards to meters in general. We have now a policy for water meter testing. Should we have one for electric at Sewer as well, or is that, I know they don't fall under the AWWA, but wouldn't there be something associated with those types of meters that could also potentially cause problems here in the city?
Correct, Mayor, I will be researching the electric meter. The sewer is based off the water meter.
It's based off the water.
So I'm just begun researching the electric.
We've had all our meters now replaced within the sewer, correct?
Almost.
Okay, so what percentage of the city are we still working on?
Under one percent.
Under one percent. And do we have a timeline in regards to when we expect to have that done? Is that by the end of this year?
Um, I can, I can fill that in. Basically, the ones that we have are electric meters that require a contractor to come in, and, and they're called A-frame connections, so we, they need to actually go in and we can't perform that work. So in order to get that meter replaced, we're waiting on a contractor, and there's multiple ones, so they're just kind of picking them off as they can. So I would say by the end of the summer, they should be all done.
Uh, the three hundred dollars, that strikes me as a lot of money, and I, you, you mentioned it was for testing the meter and administrative time and so forth. Is that, is that, has that figure been calculated or just kind of pulled out of the air as a disincentive for people to complain? I'm playing the devil's advocate here.
And I can turn it over to Rich, we actually had a conversation about this earlier, so he can fill you in.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The cost to just send a meter in to have them certify it is a hundred and twenty dollars, just to have them run it through the test. Okay, so then you got the hundred and fifty, you add shipping both ways, hundred and twenty plus shipping, you're at a hundred and fifty. The other hundred and fifty, I get two hours, one hour on the takeout side, because there's staff time to go take it out. He has to also inform the billing staff of what has transferred, and then on the backside, if that meter goes back in, if a different meter goes back in, what changes on the backside?
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions?
I'd like to be clear, it appears that we're suggesting a modification as we approve this if we do, adding at the very end of the first paragraph, above the words water meter test request. In other words, at the end of that last sentence, and the three hundred dollar deposit shall be returned to the customer. Likewise, at the end of the part that the customer signs, at the long paragraph, same type of language appears about the one hundred and two, and we'd add that same. Is, is that correct in terms of everybody's understanding?
That's my understanding.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan?
Going to play the devil's advocate as well as Dave, this three hundred dollar deposit, understand that if it's, if it's reading inaccurately to the high side, we're going to refund that back. If it's reading to the low side on a piece of our equipment, I, I'm going to use myself as an example, I have my meter pulled because I feel like it's not reading right. Why is that the customer's fault? Now, we're going to continue to put a new meter in that's going to read accurately. They called us out on a piece of our own equipment that isn't functioning properly. Why would we not credit that back?
Yeah, good question. We could go back, so the three hundred dollars is used as kind of a, a number, but we could go back and say, oh, your, your meter's reading sixty percent accurate, so you've been undercharging you for forty percent, or forty percent undercharging you. And then go back and try to figure out how much your bill should be or how much you owe the city, because your meter, or the meter that we provided you is undercharging. You know, the idea is that you've probably paid less than what you should have for the services, and the three hundred dollars is probably like a stopgap between, you know, charging you, it could be an astronomical amount, you know, if you're, if you're an industrial customer and you use millions of gallons and you're off by one percent or, sorry, three percent and you meet that threshold, then you could come back and say, oh yeah, you know, you owe the city, you know, thousands of dollars. So it's kind of a, it's, it's almost a compromise because I don't think that that conversation would go well if, you know, it's our meter and we say that, you know, you owe us money because our meter's not reading right. It's kind of like, well, you probably didn't pay as much as you should for that, so.
Well, and I follow that, but, I mean, it's just, it truly is a fine line because essentially, if it was my meter, I'm essentially calling the city out on a fault in their own equipment. So at that point, I mean, is it, should it be the city's responsibility to pick up that slack? I'm asking that question, I don't know the answer to it.
Technically, he's saying that, that we're performing, that, that he would be performing the city a service by calling an issue to his own meter, to a meter that's on his house. That's going to help make you money in the future.
Because if I am that commercial place where that's an astronomical number, I mean, that's all money in our pocket at that point.
It would be hard to charge them retroactively, because you need to know the exact date it went bad, and how would you determine that?
Correct, and I don't know how many times we'll, we'd get a complaint or request to check the meter if it's underbilling, but I get what you're saying, you know, it would, it, it could happen. You know, and if they think that they're getting overbilled and then all of a sudden they're getting underbilled, you know, they still lose their three hundred dollar deposit. So, yeah, I mean, it, it's something that we could look at, you know, if, if it's underbilled, you know, they get that, they get that back, but we get to get future revenues or something like that, that we could look at that. You know, if, if you guys follow that, say they'd get the three hundred dollar deposit back if they were below the ninety-eight, but then we'd put in a new meter and then they, their bill would go up.
Or the other option would be to drop that down to split the difference and refund a hundred and fifty at that point and waive the staff time, because we've just thrown an idea out on the table.
Yeah, I think either one of those options would be just fine.
I think, I think you brought up a good point. Whose responsibility is if the meter is not operating properly? I think that's a really good point, and if it's a shared responsibility of the, of the owner to report it and for the city to fix it and take responsibility for it, splitting the difference might be a reasonable thing to do.
You had said that the, that the older meters that were ten years or so older were mechanical, and so the new don't have any moving parts?
The new meters that the city put in do have, they're positive displacement meters. The brand-new meters that just came out in the last ten years, they're, they have no moving parts in them. The city did not go that way because they're very costly. But that is going to be the new standard come a couple of years, positive displacement meters will be gone, and they'll be, it'll be all solid-state meters all the way around.
I'd like to have another little monster for you here.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
You're talking about adjusting the customer's account, but our sewer bills are key to our water bills. What account is going to be clarified here? It's not clear in this policy. Is it about water only? Is it about water and sewer? It may be that we need to go back to the drawing board here.
I think that that's a really good idea because I, we, because the reason you bringing this up, we have roughly three dollars and twenty-five to three dollars and fifty cents per dollar that we spend on water, we're spending on sewer. So obviously, the sewer bills are going to have to be adjusted accordingly too, if we find a problem with one of our meters. So I think it probably would be a good idea to go ahead and maybe bring this back and we can talk about this again at the next city council meeting.
Yeah, that, that is perfectly fine, so just so I got my notes in order so we can adjust this accordingly. So clarify, the intent is that sewer will be included with this, but we'll make sure it's very clear that, that if there is an adjustment necessary. Is there any council direction, just general consensus for if it's an undercharge? It sounds like the feedback that we've gotten is that it should be a reduced rate, potentially a hundred and and fifty dollars if it's under ninety-eight percent, you know?
I'd really like to see the city split that with the customer, I guess, if it was up to me.
I like that idea too, that there's something involved, but not certainly the three hundred dollars.
Yep. And then a couple of the notes that Noel had brought up about the end of the three hundred dollars being credited back to the customer if the meter is over one hundred and two percent. So if they're being overcharged, then that money will be credited back. We'll make sure that that's clear as well. Is there anything else that you'd like to add before we bring it back?
I just have one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rolla.
Since, since actually this is a new policy that we are going to be doing, I think it would be smart to get it, to have the actual public to know about it. So maybe to have it and include it when we have to send out our bills.
I think that's a great idea as well. You're talking about in the form of a utility bill notice that goes on.
Yeah, yeah.
Before it's, what's being proposed before it's acted on by the city or what's the timing of this?
No, I was going to suggest to do it when we do it after.
In other words, once it's adopted?
Yes, yep.
If it is.
So we're going to go ahead and table this until August, or I'm sorry, our first meeting in August, August thirteenth, I believe it is. And at that time, we'll have the modifications made based off what we've discussed here tonight. And that should take care of it. Okay, moving on to line item eight Charlie, the ice resurfacing machine replacement discussion.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council. Before you tonight is just a heads up and I'm looking for input from the group on our ice resurfacing machine. It has been brought to the attention of public services and city administration that the current machine that we have is in need of repair, roughly about fifteen thousand dollars in repair to replace hydraulic hoses, connections, things of that nature. The current value, as you can see, we're going by what the trade-in value is in the quote that we've attached from Zamboni is roughly about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So we're getting pretty close with repairs equalling the cost of the, or the value of the unit itself. So this has been brought up by the recreation staff because ice goes in October first and we need to make sure that we can, we can condition that ice so that it can be used for hockey. So essentially, what I've described in the packet are two options that we can do and I'll take direction from city council on what we will end up doing. Essentially, we could repair the unit for that around fifteen thousand dollar quote that we've gotten. And then it's slated to be replaced in 2020. At 2020, that value of that machine would be about twelve thousand dollars. So we would be able to get that trade-in of, you know, the trade-in value of the, that you'd see in the quote that's attached would go from sixteen five to twelve. The actual cost of the unit may increase as well a little bit just with the consumer price index increases. The second option would be to replace the unit ahead of schedule. And that request has been from the recreation staff to be done this year. They've been working with Zamboni to see if it's even feasible with their production timelines and things like that. And they can get us a machine by November first is what they've, what they've said. So there's essentially a one month period of time where we'll have to limp along our current machine, which can be done from what I hear from our recreational staff with some very minimal, minimal repairs. So what that would entail, if you look at our CIP, this was slated for 2020. We have some items in the recreational, or recreation CIP, CIP for 2019 that would likely be reorganized based on this, one of those being the parking lot repair. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other being fitness equipment, which has been allocated for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. So we're looking at various things with those, maybe doing some patching and such type repairs on the parking lot. And we're looking at possibly leasing fitness equipment. And that'll all come to fruition during the budget process, personnel budget and city council ultimately. But the one thing is the timing with this is we need to have some sort of direction in a timely manner from city council. The lead time for a new unit, as I mentioned, is November first, which is around three months. To repair the unit is around six weeks lead time. So we'd like to know what we, what we should do with the current machine, if we should purchase a new one. We've discussed this in detail with public services, finance. This is something that finance director said that we can reallocate some funds. And then, you know, we can look at some things in our budget that we currently have planned for this year to try and push them off to next year so that at the end of the year, when you get your 2018 audit, you don't see a big discrepancy in this that we're using like fund balance for something of this nature. So there's ways that we can do it internally to make it work. We can go either way. We can have the unit repaired and then replace it according to the CIP. But this is something that, that has come up that we need, just need to have a discussion about. So with that, I'd like to entertain any questions you may have about this and try to get some direction on how we should proceed.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Crogdon.
On the top of the second page, there's also some other cost factors involved. Twelve fifty a year in LP gas savings to be basically offset by the cost of batteries. In five years, if a battery costs whatever, it would be about sixty-two fifty in five years. So it looks like that's kind of a wash, but there's also a two thousand dollar a year savings, particularly with air quality monitoring, which means we also have better air in the place where people are using an athletic facility. So we'd be saving a couple thousand a year. I just, I want to point those out. I would favor option two, moving on, doing it right and having the best facility we can for those who use the facility. I started to say residents, but some of this is also non-residents who use it, which is also good for the image of the city.
I know that Councilmember Johnson had a question that he had posed to the city administrator regarding if we'd have to sacrifice anything off our 2018 CIP, CEP. Did you want to maybe bring that question up?
Well, it's not the 2018 CEP, it's the 2019 CEP.
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
So the previous slide, the bottom one, the one before that, that should be the last one. They re-prioritize CEP based on this expenditure in 2019, right? We're re-prioritizing the 2019 CEP and the Zamboni's agreed to not bill us till 2019, correct?
Correct. And yeah, so the expenditure in my eyes is kind of a 2018 expenditure, but it is technically a nineteen if we do get billed. Talking to finance, Zach has indicated he'd rather pay this in 2018 so we can capital, capitalize on the, on the purchase. So it would be technically a 2018 purchase. They've agreed to bill us in 2019, but after discussing this with Zach, after the packet went out, he thinks that it'd be better just to have it all billed in 2018.
Okay, for accounting reasons.
Correct.
The other clarification is what, what's the lifespan of a Zamboni? What year is this one that's wearing out? What, when was that bought, do you know?
I think it's, I believe it's twenty-four years old right now. So in the typical life of a Zamboni is twenty years.
So it's a pretty long lifespan.
It is, it is. So, and we're going to approach some local businesses to see if they're interested in possibly doing some advertising on the Zamboni like you see in other, yeah, things like that. You know, I think we have a deal with K and R Graphics. They put up the big Bulldogs logo or word on the, on the wall. And then in turn, they got to advertise on the, on the Zamboni. So we'll try to generate some funds through that, through advertising, things of that nature. But yeah, it is, it is a machine that probably should be replaced. You know, we established this capital equipment plan last year and we tried to make everything fit in there accordingly to what we think we, at the time, we could get for the life of the product. But things like this come up when you have aging equipment.
Well, again, going back to the question about currently, 2018 fiscal year, would we be sacrificing anything with CIP, CEP dollars because of having to go ahead and escalate the purchase of the Zamboni for this year?
No, we won't. There's some projects that have been delayed, like the Tap Sidewalk project that were slated to be done this year. We've received additional funding for that. So that's another hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that we got for that grant that won't have to come out of the general fund. I don't want to think of it like we got this grant money and now we're paying, buying a Zamboni early. But we should be able to, to finance everything that we can do that's been identified that hasn't been delayed. So there aren't going to be any, any projects that we say we're not going to do. We'll actually be carrying over some dollars the way it looks from this year into next year for capital equipment and improvement. So that won't be an issue. We can cash flow it. It's just a matter of this moves up a year and a half in the CEP for the recreation department. And then some things will be pushed back a little bit and tried to, we'll try to make them last a little longer.
And for clarification for the public, the CEP means capital equipment plan?
Yes.
Well, we have two options here. Staff is leaning towards option two. We've heard justifications for both option one and option two. Is there a motion from somebody on city council regarding which direction they'd like to go ahead and?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to proceed with option two.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for option two. Is there any additional discussion?
Just that I don't see any reason to put money into, into something that's only worth sixteen thousand dollars that we know we're going to have to replace anyway. And failure on that piece of equipment would wreak havoc with our partners in Bulldog Hockey, which is important to, to how that facility is run.
That's correct.
So a question, the new one isn't going to be available till November first. Is this, the current one operational during October then? Because the hockey season starts at the end of September, early October. So what happens during that month before the new one gets here?
Yeah, so we have a plan. We're working with our vendor in Wisconsin who does repair on Zambonis to try and do the minimal amount of repair to limp it along for that one month period. It really gets hot and heavy once November hits and the school district starts playing more. So it's not our heavy, heavy use period, but staff feels that we can, we can limp it along for that one month and then trade it in for that same value. So we're hoping that those repairs are under two thousand dollars to keep it going.
Any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion, a second. We've had our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now move on to line item eight Delta, which is our board and commission appointments.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council. As you can see, we have a new face here in Marvin. And the mayor has requested that we appoint, or that the city council approve Marvin for appointment to the fire commission, Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission, and the Minnesota River Valley Transit. So with that, what we're looking for is just a motion to appoint Marvin to those boards and commissions. And then he can start getting notices and start volunteering his time to go to all these meetings.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve Councilmember Sullivan for the fire commission, the Minnesota River Valley Transit, the Minnesota River Public, Minnesota River Valley Public Utility Commission. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll up your sleeves. You're going to be busy. Welcome aboard, Councilmember Sullivan. We now move on to the highlight of the evening, edit eight Echo, our MediaCom franchise agreement, first reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council. This has been a project long overdue. We've talked about it, I think, ever since I started even as acting city administrator. So this is something that I'm excited to bring forward and bring an end to potentially. This has been a lot of back and forth between MediaCom and our attorney that we hired, Brian Grogan. He asked if he wanted to be at the meeting today. I said, "I'll try and get some feedback from city council." And then if we get some feedback, then at the, potentially at the second meeting, if it's requested, we can have him come in or actually call in, I believe it would be. Todd Coriel, city attorney, also was taking the lead on the project. He is not here. So I know just as much about the project and you can see in the summary sheet that I sent out after the packet eventually went out, just the differences between the 2001 agreement and the, and the current proposed agreement. So what we're looking at just tonight, tonight would be the first reading of the ordinance. And the ordinance is the actual agreement. And what's mostly, unless you want to read the entire agreement, the summary document is kind of an encompassing view of what we're, we're looking at. So when we started this, this exercise of developing a new franchise agreement, the, there's six primary goals that the city brought forward to MediaCom. One was to separate the city from the La Sure Hendersonson Commission. So in the current or the past agreement, the cable TV commission, CATV, it made reference to a lot of La Sure Henderson type things because they're part of that commission. Number two was to ensure the city code was incorporated into the new franchise. So right-of-way regulations govern all right-of-way users, including MediaCom. So one thing that if MediaCom wants to put in some new infrastructure, they need to go through the right-of-way process. They can't just utilize our right-of-way without notifying people and building it back up to our right-of-way specifications. Number three was to streamline regulation in the new franchise, eliminate unnecessary provisions that are no longer applicable to cable providers in today's regulatory environment. That's essentially just some good housekeeping stuff that we did with the agreement. Provide a stronger definition of gross revenues. And we'll go into that a little bit more in the next slide. Maintain the five percent franchise fee as a consideration for the use of the city's right-of-way. So what that is, and just so everybody understands what a franchise fee is, is let's say you, your cable or your internet bill through MediaCom is a hundred dollars. There is a five percent fee that's tacked on to that that would bump your bill up to a hundred and five dollars that the city then gets that revenue for. And the idea is that the city can use that money for whatever they choose in the, basically the time period from 2001 up to when CATV was disbanded, that those dollars were pumped into that commission. Now CATV does not exist anymore. So that would be something that if this, this franchise agreement is approved by city council, that we would have that conversation. And that's when that would be triggered to talk about how we want to utilize these funds, how we want to possibly incorporate some of the things we're doing here into, you know, cable access television. And then number six would be to increase the level of capital support with, for the access channel. So that's what you'll see in the summary sheet about the peg fee, that eighty-five cent per month per user charge. And that peg fee goes towards some of the capital costs associated with some of the equipment that is necessary. You know, if you want to have it be more active, cameras, you know, server equipment, things like that. So that's that peg fee. And that's one of the things that since 2000, the 2001 agreement, that's another tool that the city can use to generate some capital costs.
Can you just clarify the peg, what that means?
Um.
Public education and rec.
And government. And government, yeah. So it's a, it's a fee that goes towards providing that capital cost to have the equipment to be able to disseminate the, the media that you want. So you need to have some sort of infrastructure to, you know, program and play the items that you want to do. And this, this gives us a, a funding source for those things. So if you look at the comparison between the 2001 cable franchise and the 2018, we do maintain the five percent franchise fee maximum. And that's the, or the franchise fee, that's the maximum permitted by federal law. Payment is due quarterly. So this is kind of defining those gross revenues a little bit, when we get those payments and how we, how we track all that. Because frankly, the, the way that we currently receive payments, we just get a check and there's no real documentation as to why. we just get a check and there's no real documentation as to why we get it. So there's just some more clarification as far as what we're getting paid for and just checks and balances. And then there's a negotiated, stronger, more detailed gross revenues definition that ensures maximum franchise fee payments to the city regarding cable services. The second item was the peg costs. So the peg costs, the way that they did it previously was just the lump sum payment. It was actually called something a little different than the peg capital grant. Now we have this fee, and that fee is associated with 85 cent per customer, per month, and that's paid to the city on a quarterly basis. So one thing that we haven't gotten the information, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, is the, the forecast for users in cable television and, and things like that. So there's a set amount of users right now, so if the city grows, a certain percentage of new residents will opt in for cable. Some will use Dish, DirecTV, things of that nature that we don't have a franchise fee on. The general trend, in my opinion, is that people, residents, are generally going towards kind of a cafeteria-style cable programming that you can do through your internet. Now, MediaCom also provides internet to the city, but there's also other providers. You know, we have, we have Jaguar and then-
CenturyLink.
CenturyLink, and then possibly Verizon also, as they get into the 5G market. So there could be-
Consolidated as well?
Consolidated as well. Yep. So there's, there's, there's numerous ones, numerous options. So it's not like MediaCom has a monopoly and everybody in the city has to have a bill for MediaCom. So over time, I foresee that those numbers, unless we have a large spike in population, dropping off a little bit. So the idea is that the, the fee that we get right now might be lower than what we get in 10 years. So just keep that in mind as far as budgeting goes.
The other way around. It'll be lower in the future, not now?
Yes, yep. It'll be lower in the, in the future compared to right now. So just keep that in mind. There's, you know, things with this, with the cable market that are going on that are moving pretty quickly. So it's something, we have a franchise fee, we, we really can only get what they have for customers. So if their customer base decreases, then our franchise fee revenues decrease as well, along with peg fees. The term of this agreement is 10 years compared to the 15-year previous term. The 10 years is more standard as far as other MediaCom franchise agreements that are within the city. Basically, we, we redefined, did some housekeeping to redefine applicable law. Right now, after talking to the school district, maybe it would change now that we have a new superintendent who's in attendance. The previous administration, when we're going through this, didn't have any intent on having a dedicated channel just for the school district. The idea is that we could share one and kind of use that as a negotiating chip to get some other things, because there's only a set, a set amount of channels that a cable provider has, and if they can fill that up with another network or something like that, they're gonna have more revenue. The next point was maintain the complimentary service to the public, buildings, schools listed. So right now, we have service at all of our, our public facilities, school district as well. There's clauses in there that if we have another facility, like let's say we build something, they need to provide service to that as well. One thing that was surprising to me when I got here was that City Hall didn't have a service to come into City Hall. So that was added a year and a half ago, and that was at no cost. So-
Does this also apply to St. Anne's School?
No, I believe it's just public, public buildings and schools, so not, not anything private. They will maintain the two-way connection to the city, City Hall and the high school, so there's a connection, there's actually the port over by Ben that is connected directly to the school, so that, that's one, one essential data line for, for transmitting the-
If I may-
Yep.
Exhibit C does have St. Anne's.
Oh, does it? Okay.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna maintain that $10,000 security fund. So what that is, is they have, essentially, if you think about it as a warranty bond, if there's an issue in town, let's say they're doing some work in the right-of-way and they damage somebody's car, things like that, it's kind of just a security fund that we can, we can tap into if there's any issues. And then we'll have improved customer service standards. And basically, what that, what that says, and it actually stated this in our previous one, is that the city, and what we'll likely do is we'll start up a request tracker item for MediaCom, and we have to be, act as a hub for people to give us feedback about MediaCom. So if your service goes out, the city should know, and so that we can use that to make sure that they're providing the service that they say that they should in the contract. So there'll be other ways that customers maybe aren't accustomed to, letting people know that there's a service outage and things like that, and, and the City Council can look at this agreement, look at some of those outage reports, and say, "Well, this isn't working. We need to, we need to work something else out because too many people have too many outages too frequently." So that'll be one thing that, that we'll do, and I think that should be managed pretty easily. You know, we're not out there to fix somebody's cable, we're just gonna be tracking some of the complaints of outages. So with that, if you, if you want to ask any questions or give any sort of direction, essentially, what we were at as far as negotiations go was if this was going to endure any longer, there would have been some, there's a federal mediation process that we would have to go through. So keep that in mind. I mean, we can go through that route if, if that's the route that City Council chooses. I think that just franchise fees in general should be discussed a little bit to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what they, what they are and how they work, and then just give any, any direction, feedback. If you would like to have Brian Grogan call in to discuss it at the second hearing, there, there is a cost associated with that. It's an hourly rate. So keep that in mind. If it's just have him, you know, be there, that's fine, but there, there will be a cost. Todd will be here for the second reading, once that occurs. So basically, we're looking for some feedback, questions, and then direction to publish this as a public hearing for the, for August 13th, and hold that public hearing on, on August 13th, and potentially adopt this agreement on that day.
I've got a couple of questions.
I will too, Mr. Mayor.
My first question is, do we have an idea how much we're gonna be generating in revenue from the franchise fee from MediaCom annually, and also what are we looking at as far as our peg dollars annually? That's the first question. And the second question is, for the benefit of those that are both in attendance and also those that are listening, MediaCom, is there a particular reason why there's a franchise fee associated with MediaCom and not with the other providers to the city of La Sure, such as Dish, or Direc, or CenturyLink, or Jaguar, or the myriad of others that perhaps might be out there?
Yes. Yep. So I'll start with the franchise fee annually. Right now, it's around $40,000. Like I said, that number could decrease or increase depending on usership. So that's kind of the, the guiding principle that we put in the budget currently. The peg fee, we're thinking that'll be around, around $600 a month, is what we think. So, you know, right around that 7,200, you know, estimate-wise, we're thinking $6,000 to $7,000 for the peg, peg cost annually. And then, why is it for MediaCom? Well, when this was established in 2001, MediaCom was the premier and almost had a monopoly in La Sure. So it was the, when you, when you establish a franchise fee, you want to try to get as much of the market as you can. Right now, I would say that regarding cable television, they're still, they still have the majority of the market share. Now, there's other entities that are coming in that are taking away from that. You'd hope that MediaCom comes up with some things that help them compete, you know, but they are still the, the large, largest market share of our cable provider in town. So that's why that this makes sense. It wouldn't make sense to, to throw it onto everything, because as you can imagine, we have a lot invested in just establishing these agreements. Our payback on this will likely be, you know, six months or something like that. I'd have to look and see how much, how much, I think the last I checked, we were at around $20,000 in legal fees for negotiating this. So that's six months of, of revenue from this agreement that, you know, if we have to do that with every single provider, big or small, our ROI won't be there. So you typically have franchise fees for our largest providers and then, and try to capture as much of the market as possible.
If I may, a couple of quick, I'll, I'm kind of building towards something here. Is the 5% fee currently in, in place, the franchise fee?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, we're not upping it or decreasing it. It would stay the same under this. The, the agreement reads cable television. It does not mention phone service or internet service. Will the 5% only apply to the cable portion of such a bill?
I will get clarification on it before I, I let you guys know that. I believe it's the whole bill, but I'll, I'll clarify, and if it is, we should define it. So, but I, but I may be incorrect, so-
Well, for example, if somebody has CenturyLink, are they paying any kind of franchise fee?
They are not.
Okay, then they shouldn't be paying them here on their phone or their internet. If we're not doing it for Jaguar, if we're not doing it for CenturyLink, to be fair to our citizens, that's not a fair way to do it. That may change your estimate of $40,000, because a MediaCom bill is more than half internet and phone, perhaps. All right, that's the first. Secondly, if we were to have cable TV, or peg, whatever we want to call it, the cost of that's not built into this in terms of an operator, all we're talking about is possible capital equipment. Is that correct?
Correct. So if, if we would choose to have somebody that's focused on providing programming, things of that, that's not included in the peg. But that would be something that would be at the discretion of City Council.
The next is, it, it strikes me as kind of odd that the fee, the franchise fee, is charged to the customer. MediaCom should be eating that. They're getting the right-of-way, they're getting the business. We're charging the resident, the customer, rather than MediaCom. And that strikes me as the wrong approach. Now, maybe it's like anything else, it's just another type of tax. But I'll, I'll state right now, I'm opposed to the 5% franchise fee. That may be the whole reason we negotiated this thing. I don't know, but I don't think it is. But I, it strikes me as it's not fair overall in the city to charge people that have cable as opposed to Dish, or Net, or Direc, or anything else. If we can't make it across the board for all such things, then we shouldn't be doing it at all. I'll just, that's where I am now. I'm not gonna say I wouldn't waive the first reading. Lord forbid somebody wants that thing read tonight. But the point is, I think we need to think about this. So, I'll, I'm done.
Just to piggyback on that part, and I have two other questions. I switched from MediaCom to DirecTV and now to Dish, and I have not paid a franchise fee for either the DirecTV or Dish. So it's not, that 5% is only on the MediaCom. And has that been occurring the last several years that we, we, after we dissolved the joint powers? Or has that turned off?
No, that has been occurring ever since 2001.
And so those revenues are, are in some kind of an account that can be used for hiring someone to do the programming or anything? Where did that money go?
Well, since it's been dissolved, it's been accumulating in the general fund for the, for the city of La Sure. Previous to it being dissolved, it was used for operations, personnel, capital purchases, things like that. If you remember when, after, after the CATV was dissolved, the city of La Sure had to front, I believe, $24,000 to pay off a loan through Hometown Bank, just to satisfy that, that winding up of that organization. So there were capital costs that were, they were making payments using that, that franchise fee. So, and there was an employee that, that CATV employed as well. So there were costs that were accumulating that the franchise fee was going to, towards, to fund.
And then when that employment relationship stopped and the joint power stopped, we kept collecting the franchise fee, but there wasn't a peg fee. Is that correct? Peg fee is something new?
Yep. So they have already paid out their peg fee. So the original term of the-
Twenty thousand.
It was 20,000, and we received two lump sum payments for that, and that likely went towards the purchase of some capital equipment for CATV. So the peg fee, we're not receiving anything for peg right now. It's just the franchise fee under the current agreement, which is just a straight 5%.
So the, the change, if this were implemented, there would be no change in the 5% that MediaCom, the cable vision subscribers wouldn't see an increase in the franchise fee, but they would see an additional 85 cents a month for the peg fee. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the, the bills essentially wouldn't change at all based on the franchise fee, except for that additional 85 cent per month charge.
Okay. So in looking back on this, we dissolved the joint powers, where is Henderson in this? What are the Henderson residents, the city of Henderson, what are they doing? We're, we're doing this, what are they doing? Or don't you know? Or is that, we don't worry about it?
I, I don't know. I mean, they're, they're not part of this discussion at all. I'm not sure if, if it's a priority of theirs to have some sort of cable access television. I'm not sure. I think that their council meetings are recorded on video, so those are available. But I don't know if they're being broadcast anywhere. So I, I'm not exactly sure what, what they, if this is a priority for them. But when they dissolved, when CATV dissolved, I know that they basically said, "We don't want any of the assets. You can have the assets," which, which meant that we then assumed that debt.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to piggyback on one of Councilmember Grogan's concerns, and that would be the franchise fee with the other service providers within the community, Dish, Direc, CenturyLink, Jaguar, whoever they all may be. What does La Sure have to do to enter into a franchise agreement with the other providers?
It would be the exact same process that we've went through to get a franchise fee agreement with MediaCom. So that's why some of the smaller providers, it wouldn't make sense to have a franchise fee agreement, because you'd have, you know, $40,000 in legal fees, let's just say, and you'd only generate $2,000 in revenue a year. So you, the payback wouldn't make any sense. So the, basically how franchise fees work, or you try, you try to get as much of the market share as you can by picking, you know, the majority provider and go from there. It's one of the most difficult things you can do is, is to try and incorporate everything. We have a franchise, or everybody into it. We have a franchise fee for electric, and there's residents in town that aren't part of our service area that don't get the franchise fee for electricity, that everybody else does. So it's one of those things where it's, it's, I would say, almost impossible to find a service that is provided to every single resident within the community that we could, we could have a franchise fee on.
Can you, I sent this question in earlier, but I think it's worth clarifying for the council. The administration of this, and the administration of the peg money and the programming and so forth, how is that gonna happen?
Who's, who's-
What board, or what group, or what person is gonna be in charge of, of managing that public access channel?
And the oversight, too, I think, was one of your concerns.
Yeah, and the, yeah.
Yep. So right now, that would fall on administration initially. If council would choose to establish some sort of group that would start with programming and do programming for the, the peg channel, that'd be another initiative that City Council could direct me to do. There is a cost associated with that. We could try to incorporate it into existing staff, but I think that it would almost warrant a part-time position of some sort to be able to do it the right way. So have somebody that's focused on that, that has some experience in, in doing some of the programming of that nature. So there would be a cost to it. You know, the, the, the most, I guess, the, the cheapest way to do it would be to take what we do here, like through live stream, capture that actual document, or actual video, and somehow get that uploaded, loaded to MediaCom servers to play. That'd be the bare minimum that we could do. Now, I think that there's, there may be some desire from City Council to do a little bit more, but that's a discussion for the future. But initially, like, the, the finances will be handled by Zach and myself. We've been tracking the, the franchise fee accumulation since the dissolution of CATV. So there is a fund balance that's associated with that. And then any expenditure moving forward, we would, we would then code to that bill. So there'd be essentially an item for cable access television back in the budget, if, if there is something of that nature.
One of the things the comp plan suggested was having an annual city school board meeting to talk about common areas, and this might be one, this might be an example of one area that we could talk about, as well as partnerships and, and housing and other things. I'm just, I'm just wondering when we can do this. Do we have a timeline for, for fleshing out the rest of how this is gonna work?
Well, if, if the agreement is essentially adopted at some point in time, the ordinance is passed, we publish it, it goes into effect 30 days after it's, or actually, seven days after it's published, then we would start operating underneath the new agreement, and then we could start having those discussions about what we want to do as far as partner with the school district. In, in my eyes, having one channel 24 hours a day, there's plenty of time to throw different things in there for both schools. different things in there, um, for both school district and the city. Um, that, that was kind of the thought, is, is we could have two channels, but then there'd be dead air on one of them periodically. So, uh, you know, once, once this is approved, or if it's approved, um, then that's when we would have some conversations about what we want this to look like, um, in the future.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan.
One question I have, and it's on Article Exhibit C, um, just on those locations. A lot of my questions were answered in this discussion, but on those public facility locations, how are those determined? I mean, obviously, the school district, the city buildings, when I, like, you get down to St. Anne's School, you get down to the Lisa Nursery School, how are those affiliations determined? The only reason I'm asking is I'm, obviously, we have other preschools and stuff in town that potentially could ask the question, why so-and-so getting it, but why it's not available?
Yep, yeah, so, uh, this list was a lot longer, and what it's done is we've added some new buildings like wastewater treatment that weren't in the two thousand and one agreement. Um, the idea is that it's, you know, St. Anne's obviously got, got into the mix as well. Uh, so this list was existing, so we piggybacked it off of the old list. Um, if there's other ones, we could, we could try to incorporate them in there. I'm not sure if they would be, uh, open to that. Um, this is essentially saying, you have to provide service to these facilities, so.
Okay. Any additional questions? If not, I'd like to go ahead and accept a motion for waiving the first reading of the MediaCom franchise agreement. Direct staff to publish the notice for the public hearing in preparation of a second reading of the ordinance on August thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move to, to our comments, reports, and items of appreciation, and this is an opportunity where we're just kinda going around the room and trying to figure out what everybody's up to, what meetings they've attended, and that type of thing. So, that said, we won't pick on the new guy right off the get-go, we'll start over there with Councilmember Grogman.
Pick on the old guy, will you? I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Roloff.
Yes, I do have two things. The first thing is, uh, do we have, um, what is the, um, situation on the, actually, Second Street project?
Yeah, I can give a little update. I intended to send something out on Friday, but, uh, some sick kid issues, so, uh, you know, I think I might just throw something out on, on the city blog about this, because it, it comes up occasionally. And right now, they're still trying to establish the, the grass or the turf on the boulevard per the spec, uh, you know, and the final lift will go on after that's done. Uh, they're still going through some of the punch list stuff that's been identified by the city, and the punch list are just items that they need to clean up before we can final accept it. Uh, one of the things that, that, you know, I don't wanna say it's good about this, is this, this pushes out the two-year warranty period that we have, so they have a warranty bond that goes out for two years after city council final accepts it. Uh, the project was supposed to be, um, finalized June fifteenth for the contract. Um, so essentially, they have to, they have, as soon as they get it done, our staff has to sign off on the project, and then that'll come to city council for final acceptance, and that'll kick into that two-year, that's when that two-year warranty period will start. So essentially, the, the only good thing that I see of this is that the warranty period extends, so if there's things that crack, um, things that fail, those will be replaced at no cost. Now, I wanna get this project finalized out, because, you know, it's a, in my eyes, it's a good project, that, it's one of the, you know, we haven't had a reconstruct project in a long time, and the one thing that's bringing it down is the turf on the boulevard. So I want them to get it done, and we're, we're trying to put as much pressure on them as we can.
Okay. And then the second thing, Mayor, I will be attending the MM, the MMPA, actually, annual, um, the, I'll be attending the annual, um, s- 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 upper, um, and, and so, and so that's gonna be, um, tomorrow night.
You're not swiggle, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huntington.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, let's see, I had a MRVT meeting, uh, last week, I think it was. I was supposed to get a report on the, our, when we had the free rides and all the people we had. Unfortunately, the person hadn't sent me the information yet, so at the next council meeting, I'll share that. Um, my HRA, uh, meets, uh, this week, this Wednesday, so the next meeting, I'll talk about that. And as chairman of, co-chairman of the MRVT and the Secretary of Murpuck, welcome Marvin to our, those committees. That's it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Johnson.
I have three items. Uh, one, we had, a week ago, we had our conference of Plan Action Team meeting, and, uh, we made a decision to push the Future of the City Forum, which is supposed to be an annual or every year-to-two-year review of the comp plan, push that back to next March and try to do it in, in, uh, conjunction with the Business and Retail Expo, uh, so we can maximize our, our exposure and people can accomplish two things at once. Uh, but in the meantime, this fall, we're looking at a, a date of September, Wednesday, September nineteenth, from six to seven-thirty for a town hall to debrief the citizens on the downtown master plan. I think the, uh, our discussion at their Comp Plan Action Team meeting was that the public really hasn't had a chance to dialogue about the final report that we received, uh, a year ago, and, or almost a year ago. And this town hall on, uh, September nineteenth would enable us to, with Planning Commission, the EDA, city council, and the Comp Plan Action Team to discuss with the community, give an update, how we're doing and what we've done in the last two years of the complan, or the last year, uh, what the, what the downtown master plan says, and get some engagement with the citizens about that. So that's a, a key date coming up in just a, one, two, two months. The second thing, um, is usually mid-year, in previous years, we've done a, a goal, our priority update, how are we doing on our, the priorities and the goals we set back in January? So I'm hoping that we can discuss that, and at the same time, maybe we can take a look at our comp plan, 'cause our comp plan work plan for the city council hasn't been flushed out as much as it needs to be. Um, then we talked about that about three months ago in one, another meeting, and I think Jasper knows what I'm talking about there. So I would suggest that, that, uh, we schedule some kind of a, maybe during one of our, our update meetings on our city goals, how we're doing at the midpoint of the year, and also take a look at that city council work plan for the comp plan and, and where that's at. The last thing, I just repeat what I mentioned last time, uh, the filing dates for the city council seats, there's three of them open, uh, that's gonna be July thirty-first through August fourteenth, so by the time we have our next meeting, that filing period will be almost over. Uh, we'll be meeting on the thirteenth, and that's a night before the deadline of five o'clock on that Tuesday. I believe the school district has the same timeframe for the school board seat, so if there's any way, uh, and I know we've started communicating about that, that we can emphasize with people we know to, to consider running for these three seats and the process that entails to do that, 'cause it's, it's not just signing up, it's getting twenty-five signatures and going through a, a process. So I just wanted to bring that up again, 'cause I think it's important that the public really considers not only running, but who they're going to support for the three council seats that'll be open.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Favolus.
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, Murpuck, we, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, with the Centrate project and the Screen project. Um, we've, uh, gone through the bid process, we've signed a contract, and, uh, they're gonna be doing some smaller things first before they, uh, um, manhole work and things like that, that's, uh, kinda needs to be done first before they, they move forward with too much more. Um, another thing was, uh, EDA meeting, uh, tonight, it was a good EDA meeting tonight. I wanna put, uh, kudos out there to Samantha DiMaggio for the hustling that she's been doing. Um, we had our, our first, uh, person to, uh, to put in for a, uh, one of the, the facade program that we have, uh, and that, uh, is good to be able to see, so we'll be able to, to start seeing some, some of the businesses downtown, uh, taking advantage of, of some funds that, uh, EDA and, and city council are putting out there. Um, as well as being able to, uh, she's helped, uh, with EDA selling some property that, uh, that has been sitting on our books for a long time and getting it back on the tax roll, so it's good to have her on board.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Sullivan.
I don't have anything to report. I do wanna take the opportunity to thank all of you current city councilmen for bringing me on board and looking forward to working with you guys and getting a part of these committees, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being part of the team. And I've got a couple of things. First thing I'd like to do is to remind everybody the giant celebration's coming up here, not this coming weekend, but the weekend thereafter. City council and city staff will be represented on a float again this year, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, get your eggs and water balloons ready. Uh, also, wanted to let you also know that, uh, we've had two weeks now of our Thursday gathering down for the South Second Street Merchants, South Main Street Merchants, they get together on Thursdays, and, uh, we've had some inclement weather on both Thursdays, but hopefully, the weather will be getting better here in the future. So please get the opportunity, go on down there and, uh, see what that's all about. It's a good time to meet folks that you may not know and get a chance to see what some of our local, uh, merchants have available. And, uh, I think that, uh, if I could get, uh, my fellow city council members to all stand, I'd like to think that we could get a round of applause for our new superintendent. Welcome. Welcome to La Sure, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
I didn't mention her name. Marlene Johnson. Marlene Johnson.
Dr. Marlene.
Doctor Marlene Johnson, welcome aboard. City clerk, anything for us? HR director and all the other titles that you have, anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. And, uh, we don't have our city attorney tonight, how about we turn it over to our city administrator?
Yeah, I'll make this, uh, quick. I have a project management meeting, um, tomorrow for the one-twelve Turn Back Project, so we'll know more about the, the schedule change and things of that nature after that meeting. Uh, I'll provide feedback to, to council and the public as far as what that schedule looks like now that we've kinda heard that there's a, a year delay on that. Uh, the first RPAC meeting has been scheduled for August seventh, so it'll be on the first Tuesday of every month.
Could, can you, when you use those acronyms, can you give the full name? 'Cause I'm not sure the public knows.
Yep, um, Recreation Parks, Recreation and Parks Advisory Council Committee, sorry. Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee.
You say it's gonna be what day?
Um, it'll be the first Tuesday of the month at five PM, uh, here in the city council chambers. So we'll have our first meeting on August seventh, and I did get a, um, a resignation already from the board, so we'll be looking at appointing another person at the next meeting. So we do have one additional applicant that didn't get chosen, so that'll likely, I'm gonna reach out to them. I just got this information today, so we'll be, uh, potentially filling that position. Um, and then, so yeah, that's exciting, and then we're gonna incorporate the, the RPAC into the budget process, 'cause there's a lot of things that are parks and recreation related that we're talking about. So, uh, it'd be great to get their input on some of this, to provide some input to the Personnel and Budget Committee, um, which then can provide some input to the city council. Um, and then, yeah, we're just working on, uh, budget items as we speak. Um, I just received a budget from Zach this afternoon, uh, with some of the changes that we've made, uh, internally. So the next, uh, meeting, Personnel and Budget Committee meeting is, uh, August first at two-thirty PM. So we'll be going through the various items in the budget and talking about, um, you know, some of the changes that we have. So-
Is that again in August?
August first, um, it's a Wednesday, I believe, at two-thirty. So, other than that, we have a lot of new staff. We had a, uh, um, kind of a employee meet and greet for the staff, where everybody got to meet all the new faces and, and have lunch, so that was good. Um, we do have one position from the reorg, uh, left to fill, and that's the, uh, Recreation and Community Education Coordinator position, and, uh, we're likely going to be posting that in August. I'm, I'm trying to get some feedback from some department heads at Mankato State University on the job description. Uh, likely, we'll be able to post that sometime early August and potentially fill it by October. So that's the, that's the schedule as far as personnel items that we have going on, and that's the, that's the only vacant position that we have, other than, um, the position titled Murpuck Manager, and, uh, that's, will likely remain vacant until we have some future discussions about Murpuck. So, um, other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.